I hereby call the Des Moines City Council meeting for Thursday, November 17th to order. And with that, I'll have Councilmember Steinmetz lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Let the record reflect that six members are present. Councilmember Oxiger is unavailable to come due to illness. Do I have a motion to excuse? I have Councilmember Nutting making the motion. Councilmember Steinmetz make the second. All those in favor say aye. Seeing all six, he is excused. With that, we're going to break, uh, break the order of the meeting just slightly. Um, we're going to start with the city manager's report. And I'm going to yield the floor to City Manager Michael Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of items, and I appreciate the courtesy. We have a few guests with us. But I'm going to start with the, uh, we're going to have Nicole Nordholm, our Parks Director, who's now being informed that she's going first. Talk about our Human Services Funding Recommendations. And I, I just want to say a few words about this. I think of all the, of all the things we do, this is, in some respects, the most fun. And the best way to have a positive impact in the community, which we really appreciate. And the way that we've done this, there are two points I want to make before Nicole starts. The first is that we have a Human Service Advisory Committee. And the people on that committee review all of the applications and try to place based on value and impacted the city and quality of organization. They try to distribute the funds, the recommendation for the use of the funds in a, in the manner that they see best fits what the needs of the city are. And one thing that I'm very proud of, as we've gone through the budget in the last six years, when we started, um, we were putting out about eighty-five thousand dollars. The council had a goal for us to spend one percent of the general fund. General fund's twenty-five million, so that would have been two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Over the last six years, incrementally going up about twenty-five thousand dollars each year. And in the last year, taking some of the American Rescue Plan money and adding that, this year, the recommendations from this committee are for the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, we're really, really pleased about that. And we intend to, to work with council in future years, perhaps to increase that percentage that goes to our human services. With that, I think, Nicole, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone that's here to listen about human services. I'm Nicole Nordholm, Director of Parks Recreation and Senior Services, and I'm here to talk through our funding recommendations for 2023 and 2024. So first, I would like to acknowledge our wonderful Human Services Committee. So if Corinne Anderson Ketchmark and Diane Hoyer could please stand up, they are back there. These are, um, these are two of the three committee members we have, and they are just thoughtful and intentional individuals who have dedicated countless hours to reviewing our applications and making final funding decisions for human services. We're incredibly grateful for both their personal and professional experience that they bring to the committee and the community as a whole. Strong staff support has also been provided by our Management Analyst Rochelle Sims, as well as our Council Liaison Deputy Mayor Buxton. So, as a quick recap, the city allocates funding to area nonprofit agencies who provide direct and critical services to those in our community in need. The committee reviews, evaluates, and manages contracts with staff support for all of the agencies we end up funding, which currently is twenty-five. Managing these contracts is no easy feat, so we brainstorm and we meet regularly with South King County partners. Uh, we've creatively worked with agencies that have been forced to alter service delivery through the pandemic. And we review quarterly invoices and reports while also continuing to work to better understand the current need within our community. The funding cycle is open every two years, and agencies are able to apply to any of the sixteen King County area cities that utilize this same application process and criteria. So for this last cycle, the application process opened back in April of this year, and we had all this time to review and go over everything with our committee. As Michael mentioned, or as City Manager Mathias mentioned, um, we're pleased that we've been able to meet our goal of getting to one percent of the general fund for human services funding. But I would also note that the requests for funding this cycle were over fifty percent greater than the funding that we were able to distribute, which is the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The funding asks were six-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand with forty-eight agencies seeking funding. Okay, so, we have priorities that allow us to strategically rate and review the applicants for funding. Our committee this year, when we went to go through the review process, asked the question, you know, how do we know what our community needs are? This is a crucial question. As we know, the Des Moines community is growing and is increasingly culturally diverse. So our priorities are as follows up here. Have secure and affordable housing and food adequate to support needs. Support safe neighborhoods and communities. Support physical and mental health. Have the education and job skills that lead to employment and living wage jobs. Support early childhood education and support youth success. Okay, so these next slides show a nice breakdown of the specific funding priorities and how we support each one. So in this, um, in the orange, we, this allocation cycle, close to forty percent of our funding supports secure housing and food resources for those in need. And then in the blue and green, you can see over twenty percent was allocated both to physical and mental health services, as well as the early childhood education and youth success programs. And then the yellow, close to seventeen percent, went to violence-free and survivor support work. So, and then I'll also note that the final priority category of the education and job skills training will be discussed, um, in a little bit down the road. Okay, so breaking this out even further, for the secure food and housing, you can see the six agencies listed on the right are the funding that went into that thirty-nine-point-two-four. So the Food Bank is one of our longtime, um, funders. Backpack Brigade, Meals on Wheels, St. Stephen Housing, Catholic Community Services, and Hospitality House are all agencies that work for secure food and housing for those in need. Next, for the, um, the next category, the violence-free survivor and different support services, the, let's see, the agencies on the right there are supporting in that category. So, Consejo Counseling and Referral, the Genesis Project, Lighthouse Northwest, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, the Bar Association, and then Two-One-One Information Line and Teen Link. For physical and mental health services, those listed there, both Health Point Medical and Dental, Babies of Homelessness, Pediatric Interim Care, the Washington Poison Center, the Eastside Legal Medical Legal Partnership, our Hyde Senior Shuttle, and Westside Baby. And I'll note that a lot of these agencies we've previously supported, there were nine new this cycle that applied and that we're funding. And then finally, for the category of early childhood education and youth success, we support and have in the past Kent Youth and Family Services, the YMCA Kinder Readiness is a new one that I'll talk about in a bit, Children's Home Society, and the Children's Therapy Center. So then, back to the priority of education and job skills leading to employment and living wage jobs. So we were fortunate enough this last year to, um, through our ARPA funding, designate a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to ANEW, which is a workforce training program. So in March of this past year, the city entered into a contract with them for workforce training, pre-apprenticeships, scholarships, and grants. And we have this contract in place through 2024, which is really exciting. So this, um, section takes that, uh, the goal of the education and job skills. And then just two, I mentioned, we are funding nine new organizations this term, but the two new ones that I'll highlight that I'm pretty excited about, um, the YMCA has a Kinder Readiness Program specifically in Midway Elementary. It'll serve Pacific Ridge neighborhood, and also they go into Waterview Crossing. And this program, um, was really important to our committee and just the community in general for the focus on this neighborhood. They will fund and support four- and five-year-olds who did not have the opportunity to attend, you know, preschool or pre-K during the pandemic and get them ready for kindergarten. And then Backpack Brigade is another great one that works heavily in the Highline School District. They provide weekend hunger bags to food insecure students. So, a lot of, they found, especially during the pandemic, you know, there were the free lunches and free meals, but then when school's been back in session, a lot of kids, you know, on the weekends are just waiting until Monday to get that breakfast or lunch. So this, um, organization, Thursdays and Fridays, goes into school and provides twenty-seven-hundred students a week, uh, weekend backpacks with breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snack for the weekend. And that concludes my presentation. Again, we're so fortunate to have the Human Services Committee, uh, staff support, and we look forward to continuing to support these great nonprofit agencies in the city. Thank you.
Nicole, thank you, and we'll take questions in a minute if council has any. But I do want to mention, um, the ARPA money, we will provide an update in the new year to, uh, council as to the use of those funds so far. Those funds are available for allocation through, um, December thirty-first, 2024, and they can be paid out through December thirty-first, 2026. So we've been able to utilize some of those funds for, um, some of these services, not just the amount that, um, Nicole, uh, expressed right now. But, it, one more resource for us, I also want to mention, Nicole mentioned, but also Rochelle Sims has just done a great job, wanted to be here tonight, was unable to, but we just want to acknowledge her. And once again, you know, this is not easy work. It takes a lot of time and effort. It's definitely a contribution to the community. And if you will join me, I'd like to give a standing ovation to our. Thank you, with Mayor, with that, if there are any questions. This will appear in the budget as an item for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for, uh, 2023.
Councilmember, I'll start with, I'll start down the line. I'll start with Councilmember Pennington, then Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you for the report. You do, thank you for your contributions to the community. It's, it is a lot of work, and it's a lot of unseen work and a lot of thankless work. So, so thank you very much. Could you provide just a clarification, um, for those that may not know, the Kent and Youth Family Services, why it's Kent and, uh, family and youth and not Des Moines?
But, I mean, they, we've funded them for a long time, and they're located in Kent, so they work a lot in school districts there, but they definitely serve Des Moines residents, and we have a long partnership with them, so.
Yeah.
Just the name.
And I just wanted a clarification for those that didn't know that it, that they do actually serve our city and our citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, how many, uh, how many, uh, grants were awarded? Twenty-five, twenty?
Twenty-five.
Okay, and, and nine new this year?
Yes.
So that's a good, uh, that's a good amount of, uh, you know, we're not doing the same thing. I don't want to call it churn, but, you know, it shows that there's outreach to new, uh, ideas. Can you describe the outreach? How do you identify, or do they come to you, or, uh, yeah, how, how do you identify the different agencies that, uh, uh, you know, want to participate and be evaluated?
Sure. So the, all the South King County cities have the same application process, so a lot of these agencies know when the cycle opens and know that they can come apply, you know, to Kent funding, Auburn, Des Moines, at the same time and the same place. And then through that partnership with the other cities, we do a lot of outreach, both to help with, you know, writing their grant application, what kind of the different goals the cities are looking for. Um, and then specifically for Des Moines, a lot of the agencies that we've funded previously will do, I mean, COVID kind of threw a wrench in it, but they'll do outreach in the city, or they'll do one-off, like, trainings or kind of programs for specific Des Moines residents. So it's kind of a mashup of all of those.
So, um, how, how many, what's it like to break into the biz? In other words, let's say I just decide I want to do something worthy for seventh graders or whatever, uh, you know, how, how do you get into that stream where you would know about the city applic, these different application processes? How do you stand up an organization to where they, you know, they can successfully get a grant like yours? Is there, is there like a system that trains people to do?
I think a lot of the, like, kind of the bigger nonprofits that are aware of both city funding and other funding sources, they partner or support the smaller guys. So a lot of times, they'll then be made aware of that this happens every two years for, for funding, for application help, and a lot of times, the different city staff, so Rochelle or myself or our committee members, will help with the, the smaller agencies that, you know, might not have a grant writer on staff or might not have the support they need to even delve into getting funding. We can help with a lot of those pieces.
Yeah, I'm just always curious how people sort of break into this, so they can, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, if I may, um, Nicole referred to this, but the specifics were, I think we received somewhere in the neighborhood of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in, in, um, dollars requested. And we're able to finance two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-plus portions of ARPA were also used for that, which we'll talk about more next year. But, so clearly, the word gets out, and I know from having run a nonprofit years ago, that the network among nonprofits is strong relative to where our resources and how do we go after them, and can we do it jointly, or, you know, I think word within that network gets out, and then also we're advertised through the, through the program.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work, and the two members back there, thank you both very much. This is, it's got to be just a heart-wrenching process to cut people out, to say, we can't do that this year. And what I'm wondering, because I think it might be helpful for us, particularly if the ARPA funds come back up, if we want to try to reallocate some, is to know who, what, who didn't make the cut, and a little bit of why. And I, I, I don't want a big report, uh, but I think that would be good information, to us, to know if we want to make some changes in the way we've already pre-allocated.
Yeah, Councilmember, um, that's, that's absolutely fair. I think, as I went through, I went through this very carefully with Nicole and Rochelle, and I was amazingly impressed by how evenly and balanced your distribution was. I don't know how you did that. But I think generally, almost everyone who applied, unless there was some technical reason, received some portion of their request. And we'll be happy to share with you what that was, uh, at, you know, at some point in the future, and don't have that with, with us right now.
Yeah, and I mean, and I'm just speculating, I'm not even oozing it as, you know, at this point, but if we can find, say, another hundred thousand dollars that we could spend this, send this direction, let, let's give us some basis to do that, if, if that's a, if that's a doable task in light of everything else.
Yes, and, well said, and technically, the way that would work, um, council adopts the budget tonight at some future point, could be the week after. Council wants to look at allocating more funds, that could be in the form of a budget amendment in the future.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll wait till we get to ARPA.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of the, the thing that's sitting out there that hasn't fully been spent yet.
Yeah, right.
You know, and the other thing I just wanted to say, in part to Councilmember Harris, there's a, there, you have to learn how to work the system. If you're going to get into nonprofit funding, you have to figure out what is the system for nonprofit funding. Nobody just steps out one day and says, okay, I'm here, tell me, you know, shine the light on what, everything I need to do. It, it takes work, it takes very hard work. It takes, you know, people have careers in this process, and we have to appreciate the work that they've done to determine, for example, when the city's funding cycles are. And that's not a skill that you just know because you decide to help seventh graders.
Well, that, that's actually.
That's actually, now, this is my time. And, you know, I'm just telling you, it's a process. Mr. Hempstead didn't know how to work the legislature, I'm sure the first time he got there. It's a process, and he got learned every year. That's how it works. And sometimes you have to work for a, a larger agency to help run a smaller agency and like that. So, you know, I think we really do need to appreciate the work that does get done in order to get the funding out to the right people and to run an effective agency. And so I appreciate everything that you and the committee have done. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, did you have the comments?
Yeah, I will just say, uh, that either, you know, we don't have the funds for it, perhaps the port, the county, larger, uh, agencies could do worse than to have classes and, um, some sort of s, basic farm team that trains people with ideas on how to break into the system. Because I fully agree, it is a process, and I run into people all the time in town who have a good idea, but do not know how to get started, and it's disheartening to find out that you, you know, it's that thing about you have to have money to make money, um, and some kind of mentoring program would not be the worst idea in the world. Thank you.
Councilmember, um, I'll recount from my own experience. Years ago, I started a nonprofit to work on public education, public healthcare. We started with zero and ended up raising a million dollars in grant money from foundations. There are resources, the Nonprofit Foundation Center, other foundation centers, that have all that information available, and most people involved in the nonprofit world access those resources.
Um, in closing, thank you very much. I, I would add that, uh, that in a lot of cases, we also, um, contribute money, like in the ARPA funds, we contributed to rental assistance and various other agencies and nonprofits as well. So there's more, even our Parks and Recreation, a lot of our, our, uh, you know, recreational leagues and, uh, uh, programs and so forth are supported in, in these regards. So, but that doesn't take away any way, anything from the good work you've done, so thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Moving on, Mayor, I want to mention, um, in the past probably two weeks or so, we have received a lot of information from the, from our community, um, with perspectives on Marina redevelopment. And so I just want to, um, make a few comments about that. There is nothing on the agenda tonight, since we're focusing on the budget and the property tax levy and so forth, um, that will address any aspects of Marina redevelopment at this meeting. Council is anticipating, we're anticipating, that either toward the end of January or early February, we will do a study session dedicated solely to Marina redevelopment. And that will be a wonderful opportunity for the community to make any comments, or hold any perspectives, or share those, uh, through public comment with the council. And that will happen, um, the beginning of next year. I, I, I do want to say that I've been a little disheartened by some of the comments we've received, because not all of them represent the truth. And I'll give you an example. There is a, there was a discussion that occurred through the, through the chain about the fact we just built a new public restroom on the renovated bulkhead, and why would we tear that down to put up a hotel? Okay, there's absolutely no truth to that. We're not going to touch that. We're not going to touch that restroom. That's not even a consideration that's ever even been considered. So, I just encourage people to attend this meeting later in January or in February, when we're able to organize it, and share your concerns and hear the actual plans, which have not been determined as of yet, it's just options that exist. And just encourage you, I think, as the mayor has very eloquently said, just retain an open mind, is all we ask. With that, Mayor, concludes City Manager Report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias, and I agree with your sentiments. With that, we'll go, is there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, it's now time for the public and written comments. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks should become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council shall be removed from the meeting. And you will have three minutes to speak. And with that, we'll start with Mr. Bill Linscott.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, City Manager, and everyone else. I'm Bill Linscott, and I'm speaking tonight as a resident. And I would like to comment on the proposed changes of the September 27 public meeting regarding the Boutique Hotel, where the discussion was moving it from the partial A up against the bank to the new North Bulkhead. I think, you know, Patty and I are, we're supportive of the Boutique Hotel. I think it'd be great. But we don't believe it should be in the Marina or in the north parking lot. That location has ramifications for the city and the residents, even our neighbors. And I think the, it's not a Marina district item, it's an everybody item. The hotel and a parking garage will remove significant public open space, a feature that's in high demand and scarce availability. And the city's actually taking great steps to acquire property for public space, public open space, knowing that we shouldn't remove any of that space from that north lot. It's a premium piece of property, and that's good. The city owns it. It's actively used by residents for their enjoyment. I can't think of a better use for it. There are several locations in the Marina District we feel would be better for a hotel, always stunning views and in close proximity to restaurants, the new theater, the post alley, and of course, the Marina and the beach park. So, the north parking lot, right at the water's edge, should be developed for and preserved for our residents. And if we do a good job of that, it'll be beneficial for everybody. We'd like the city to work on a better plan, and the ongoing economic development work in the Marina District is great, but there's still no master plan. I think, you know, certainly the city people working on this, they see it, they get it. The individual councilmembers, I don't know if you're really on the same page or not, but for us in the residents, it's hard for us to visualize the design of the city. And I think, you know, you hear the Dry Creek on 223rd, the Marina Steps, the Reflective Pond, the Adaptive Purpose Business Building, the Post Alley. And we kind of say, you need to pull this all together in a plan and show everybody so we understand it. The master plan should be, and it involves some public involvement, the reference to the augury boats and the yacht club, that insight's now four or five years old, and it needs to be refreshed. We've had a pandemic in between. And so, going forward, we'd love to see it kind of managed with a Marina Committee from the council and a citizen advisory structure to it. We appreciate everything you're doing on economic development. Great progress on it. And I want to thank you for the comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Linscott. Thank you. You know I'm going to give you a hard time about that later. Ms. Kailene Moon.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Manager. I am Kailene Moon, and I've been a Des Moines resident since 1958, raised daughters here who attended North Hill, Pacific, and Mount Rainier. I'm currently living at Wesley Gardens in Des Moines, and I serve on the Advisory Council for the seniors. I speak for myself, and I'm here to request a better process for communication with the community and the city council. Actually, it is the same thing I was requesting when I addressed the council the last time, several months ago. And that was in regard to the senior center and the city contract renewal. It really focused on communication. The latest public information about our jewel of a waterfront and an addition of a hotel and parking garage was a surprise and a poor example of community input and communication with the council. I and others are asking for improvement in this process. So, number one, I'm asking for some of the same things. Reinstate the public planning commission we had until 2013 to give residents a seat at the table on all land use. Number two, reinstate the Marine Committee we had for decades when the Marina was built. Number three, we need the city council to implement the Marina Town Hall that was voted on in 2021. Simply give us an open, fair access to information so that we feel vitally affected by these decisions in our community. Let's find a better process, one that works both ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moon. Moving on to Ms. Mary, please, I'm just going to ask that you hold your applause. It's the decorum of this type of meeting. Could I have Ms. Mary Gonzalez, please?
Thank you for hearing me, and thank you, everybody, for coming and all that. Anyhow, I won't take the whole three minutes. I just wanted to respectfully ask the council to please repeat the meeting of September 27 that was held in the senior center, and this time have microphones and maybe some audio equipment, and so that you could put it on your website so that everybody who wants to see what's going on can. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Moving on to Mr. Bill Bishop.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council Members. I'm not sure I turned my microphone on the last time I was speaking here, so you may have missed me the last time. In any case, I'm also speaking about the Marina Development question. I want to thank Councilmember Harris for attempting to put some things online, albeit he admitted they were not professionally done, but to give us an idea of what the Marina will look like if these large buildings are constructed in the north parking lot. I think that's a really good idea, and I hope that you might encourage Skylab at some point to produce that kind of three-dimensional visual aid to us so that we can see from the deck down there in all directions, excuse me, what these large buildings will do to the outlooks, to the mountains, and to the water, and to the surrounding area, because I think it's really important. So, thanks again, Commissioner, or Councilmember Harris. I agree about the rescheduling of another community meeting having to do with the presentation that was made by the mayor and Skylab in September. I think that would be a good context for the meeting that the city manager discussed or the working group, whatever that might be. It would give a good context for us to go into that meeting, kind of understanding better what the city has in mind for these plans. I would hope, if that happens, that Skylab could come up with some renderings that will show us what this looks like. Right now, we're all guessing at the size of these buildings, the actual footprint, particularly the hotel, I think, since it's out in the middle of things, and we don't really know. I was encouraged to hear the restroom won't be torn up in order to, or the city's not at least anticipating that apparently at this time. But there are a lot of other improvements out there in brand-new asphalt and all that sort of thing. So, I assume some of that may have to be dug up or something done with it. Another thing I'd like you to keep in mind is parking. We live right adjacent to the Marina. We see what goes on year-round. I can tell you there is already a dearth of parking when you have large events at the beach park. You have weddings, you have all kinds of other, as you know. You can go to, there's a website called, I think it's To The Beach, that will show you a lot of the events that took place there over the last year and I expect in the coming year. But it doesn't capture all the weddings and the other functions, private functions that take place. They put a lot of pressure on parking. I don't think the parking garage that's anticipated is going to make up for that. I see that I have about 30 seconds left. I just want to ask that you please give special attention to that, because the squid fisherman needs lots of parking out there, because they're very active right now, I think, at night. You'd be surprised how many of them are out there with their buckets at midnight, and they come in, and they're having a great time, but they need a place to park. Thank you, I appreciate your attention, and I know you'll give this your due consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. We're moving on to the next and last public comment, Ms. Kay Van.
Thank you for the city for hearing us. I am in the Redondo Beach area. Concern is still the safety. Thank you for the city, looking at things to make our community better with the items that we talked about earlier. But there's still concern of lighting on the north side of the Redondo Beach Drive, on the north side of Salty. There are activities on that little nook, because there's no light. There's activities of, this is from the neighbor, she's not here to voice her concern. There's cars parked there every night. They're doing adult activities. They are using the property there as a restroom. This week, because I walk my little guy there, my little guy almost picked up or ate one of those adult activities. So, I'm asking for maybe a light between Salty and 280, 280th, and maybe one other light there, and then one light at the corner at the end where the little curve where Redondo Drive and 281st. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van. That concludes this portion of our public comment. I'm going to pass that over. And now, we will begin public hearing for item one. I will now, I'm sorry. Oh, no, we're going to, just a correction, we've decided to do the public hearings first, and then we'll move to consent. All right? So, I will now open the public hearing for public hearing item one. Staff will give a presentation. With that, I open the floor to Deputy Finance Director Jeff Friend, I believe. Is that correct? Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to do a small introduction here. I apologize. My understanding was consent came next, I'm sorry. One thing I want to mention is that in this budget process, it's been a very complex process to accomplish as we have slowly emerged from COVID. And because of a number of issues that affect us, typically, we're not as affected by what I would call the macroeconomic structure internationally, but this year, we are significantly affected. And it's taken a couple of forms. There's been a very high rate of inflation, and I guess if you put a couple trillion dollars into the economy, you can anticipate there may be some upward pressure on prices. That's exactly what's happened. It's questionable whether the labor market has kept up with those inflationary demands in terms of wages. But one of the more striking aspects is that we're almost at full employment for a nation. We're not at 8% or 7% unemployment, we're at 3.5%, which is considered essentially full employment. So, there's been a lot of complicating factors. There's been the war in Ukraine that's affected energy prices throughout the world. There's been OPEC trying to take advantage of that, also constraining supply. There have been supply chain issues associated with the Asian markets and development. And all of those have come down to roost on every local community in America, including Des Moines. So, we've had to address issues associated with inflation. At one point, the June reading from CPI from the federal government was over 10%. It's slowly eroded down, now I think it's around eight perhaps. And there's anticipation, depending on the economist you talk with, which kind of rings back to when Harry Truman said he was looking for a one-armed economist, so they couldn't go on the one hand and on the other hand. But depending on the economist that you talk with or listen to, either inflation is going to be drawn out, we're going to face a recession, or inflation will be short-lived, and there'll be what's called a soft landing. And some of that's attributed to the Federal Reserve, which controls monetary policy, which is what the cost of money is. And on the other hand, there's the fiscal aspect, which is how much money the Congress spends and revenue that it generates. Is it close to balance, or is it in debt, or however that works? All those factors are in play, which for Des Moines represented two approaches. One, to be very cautious with our resources, dealing with uncertainty. And the second was to retain the most robust structure for our city government that's possible to do under these circumstances. And we had three tenants, which I think Beth Ann explained last time at the first hearing, which is the way we've looked at this is we've tried to emphasize the following strategies in our budget preparation. One is the advantage of technical efficiencies. We learned a lot during COVID about hybrid meetings, Zoom meetings, virtual conduct of business. We've done that in our building department, the courts have done a great job of doing that. And so, that was one thing, is to heighten the ability of our city to utilize technology to accomplish our goals. The second thing is that in order to maximize the value of our employees, we've emphasized training and skill development, skill set development, opportunities for advancement, mobility, all the things that retain a labor force and help that labor force grow. I think police are a great example of that, in terms of creating mobility and opportunities. So, we've tried to enhance that. And then finally, the last aspect of this, which I think is critical, and it was Councilmember Pennington that brought it up, had to do with safety. And he made the comment in one of our council meetings that doing more with less is not an ongoing answer that's acceptable. You cannot do more with less. You cannot have somebody operating heavy equipment to continue to operate that under the strain of extra hours or overtime or all of that. There's a point at which you've got to take safety into consideration, and that has to do with accomplishing what is possible, not what is desirable, but what is possible. And we will have a discussion with council in the new year about what the priorities for what our government needs to do so we can align what the labor force, you know, options based on our labor force actually are. So, I just wanted to give a little background on that. Every city is dealing with inflation, every jurisdiction. I hear from many colleagues in different, both single-purpose districts and in city government, who are struggling with what is the appropriate response to inflation? What should the COLAs look like? And what is fair? So, with that, thank you, Jeff, for letting me provide that, but please go ahead. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Jeff Friend, Deputy Finance Director, and going to present the proposed 2023 property tax levy. Next slide, please. So, new for 2023, the proposed property tax levy amount would be $5,563,642.
thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. The proposed levy, that number includes one percent allowable increase of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars. One of the more amazing things I've seen recently was the overall assessed valuation within the city of Des Moines increased by more than a billion dollars over last year. So last year it was about five point three billion, and then, as you can see on the slide up there, it's a bit over six point four billion. So that's a nineteen point, you know, two-six-nine percent increase. The city had additional twenty-four million dollars in new construction, and so that adds a percentage, which is about twenty-four thousand, seventy-five dollars to the overall property tax base. So all those things in consideration, altogether, the estimated tax rate per a thousand dollars of assessed value is eighty-six point four-seven cents, which is down sixteen point twelve percent from last year. And that's due, I mean, it's odd to say, well, everything's up, but it went down. Well, because the assessed valuation is so high and property taxes can only be increased so much, that results in a lower rate per thousand. Next slide. So this is the history of those rates. Going back to 2016, you can see that per thousand dollars of assessed value, in 2016, it was a dollar and sixty-five cents, just a little bit above. And it decreased every year since then, down to the eighty-six point four-seven cents in 2023. So that could be a reflection of, you know, increased property values. Next slide. Now, as far as what a property tax bill looks like, I think we've heard from the community concerns about their property tax dollars staying in the city. But the fact is, is that the city is just one of many districts that levy property tax. So on this example here, you can see the city of Des Moines, for the 2022 levy, so this would be the current year, it's slightly over a dollar per thousand. And that's really just a hair under eight percent of the whole property tax bill. You can see Washington State Schools is twenty-two percent, and the school district is thirty-four percent. But as far as money staying in the city, the city levies a certain amount of property tax and we collect it. So we're just one of many on the property tax bill. Next slide. So there's two ordinances related to this proposed property tax levy. The first one is to approve the increase, which is the one percent that's allowable. And then the second one is to approve the property tax levy.
So the next step is, is there anyone that signed up for public, to speak in public? Okay. Is there anyone, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Third time and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing no one has signed up to speak, council, do you have any questions? I'll start with Councilmember Harris and then you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
This is the one time that I will not vote against Rule 26A. And I want to compliment you on your tie and, you know,
Thank you.
shirt thing. Yeah, well done. The, I just want to point out that the amount of money that we take in, you have to have an awful lot of property value in order for us to get any money. And I just look at the way the pie is split and I cry. So, but your presentation is very clear-cut and I hope the public looks at it carefully. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, it's a good presentation and I appreciate giving the relative perspectives on things because I think that sort of really helps people understand what it is that you're asking us to do. But I also think for the record, we need to be a lot more clear about why you're proposing suspension of Rule 26A in this. And I, do you feel comfortable addressing that or should we ask the city manager? I just want to be clear.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember. This has been a typical process that's been followed. So there's nothing new in this. But one of the things, just the way kind of the dates work out, today's the seventeenth of November. We would need to inform the county by the thirtieth of November what our selection here is. However, you need fourteen days' notice to hold the meeting for the second reading, which puts us at December first. So we would lose approximately five and a half million dollars if we don't take action tonight.
Thank you. That makes it very, very clear and I do understand why. So thank you very much.
Any other council members? I also appreciated the pie chart because I'm often, you know, often accused of what we're doing with all their money and in property taxes. You can see that our slice of the pie, I think, is used very well, very prudently. I want to remind our residents that in the past few years, although the increase is very small, these fifty-some thousand dollars, we did not pass that on to our residents due to strong fiscal management and so forth. We were able to do that. But I think in this particular case, inflation is one of the catalysts where we actually have to take one after, in a third year. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, what you've done. All right. So I've seen the council has nothing else to do. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-six-three on the first reading.
Do you have a second? Councilmember Pennington? Any discussion? Councilmember Harris?
Where'd Jeff go? Sorry, I was trying to segregate my questions according to the thing. Sorry. Hope that adds into the ten thousand steps or whatever. So I noticed on the King County, because that's what I do at night, the assessments for my house went up twenty-three percent. I saw homes going up twenty-six. And yet, when I look at commercial properties, many of them have gone down. Did you notice that? Or does the county give you any, you know, guidance on what the, you know, wizardry is that?
No. What I did read was that the average increase in King County was twenty-four percent, which I experienced myself personally. But the methodology with this property tax is we get, we get the numbers from the county, but they don't really have any specific with the types of property. So if commercial properties went down ten percent, I'm not aware of the reasoning behind that.
It was just striking to me that, I mean, just, I went through like nine or ten and like all nine and ten were down and the surrounding residential properties are all up, 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 up. Okay, so the other thing is, we did bank the one percent for the last two years.
Yeah.
Is that anywhere in your thinking going into 2024, 2025? I'm just, I'm not trying to hold you to anything. I'm just trying to like, sort of.
We're aware of it, yes. Not that we can commit to something like that now, but yeah, that's, that's something that would be part of the strategy when you go through the budget process.
Is there statute of limitations? I know that sounds silly, but maybe you gotta, okay, so we could bank it for nine years and then just decide that we knead the dough and?
Yeah, as long as the banking is done by resolution and ordinance, which we did, then it should be available to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we'll now vote on the motion to suspend Rule 26A in this public hearing. All those, all those in for the motion, please raise your right hand. All council members present have voted for it, six zero. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-six-three, authorizing the increase in ad valorem taxes for the year 2023 for general city expenditures.
Seconded by Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of motion one B. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-six-two on first reading.
Do you have a second? I have Councilmember Pennington with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-six-two, determining the amount of funds to be raised by ad valorem taxes for the year 2023 for general city expenditures.
Seconded by Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. That will close the public hearing for item one, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, we closed it? Okay. Oh, my bad. There's three of them here, so who work with me? So now we'll move on to public hearing item number two, which is the 2023 preliminary annual budget, second reading. And the presentation will be by our Finance Director, Beth Ann Rowe. And I will now open the public hearing for item two.
Evening, Council and citizens. Tonight is the second public hearing for the 2023 annual budget. A budget overview is, we have, what, seven different, or six different types of funds. We have the general fund, which is the main operating fund. And if you take the beginning fund balance plus revenues, they have to equal expenditures and then ending fund balance. So your total sources and uses, the general fund is thirty-one million. All our special revenue funds, which are those revenues that are set aside for specific items, is a little less than twenty-six million. Debt service, we've got two of those. It's a little under six hundred thousand. And then our capital projects funds, which are funding sources, plus what our capital projects funds for transportation, municipal improvements, that's thirty-four million. We have what we call our business-type activity funds, which is Marina and surface water management. And then we have our internal service funds, which is seven point seven million. So our total, total sources and uses is a hundred and twenty-seven million, and that makes up our budget. We'll start with the general fund. I presented this in our first public hearing. And one of the things that we have is we have the Government Finance Officers Association target of sixteen point six-seven in fund balance. And so with our plan in 2023, we are above that target. We did make one change, which is on the agenda later under New Business, to retain the one-time expenditures, or one-time sales tax and be no tax to be used in the operating budget. But as you can see, that the ending reserve amount is projected out to be within that sixteen point six-seven. The key dynamics of our 2023 budget in the general fund is, as Jeff Friend, Deputy Finance Director, said, we've included the one percent increase in property tax for 2023. And as council noted, that we did not take that increase for 2021 or 2022, but we did bank that capacity. We are requesting the use of the one-time taxes be retained in the general fund for 2023, and that's on under New Business. As Michael mentioned, cost of living increases at eight percent due to inflation. Luckily, our medical premium changes, which we presented in the first public hearing, we've been very lucky to get our Well City rates from AWC. We had four point five percent increase on our regents plans. Our Kaiser went up seven percent. And our dental program, there was no change in benefits or premiums, but a slight decrease on the dependents. And then, as earlier mentioned tonight, the ARPA funding program, 2021 through 2024, funds may be utilized through December 31st, 2026. This was presented in our first public hearing. It shows our revenue sources, and our biggest source of revenue in the general fund are taxes. And our property taxes are probably our most stable tax source. Retail sales tax is gaining ground again as our economy's recovering. But as we all know with businesses, that can go up and down quite a bit. Our business and occupation taxes are increasing as business gets back to kind of doing better. And if you notice, in 2019, we were at twenty, a little over twenty-five million. And then when COVID hit, we went down. And as you can see in our 2023 budget, we haven't recovered back to pre-COVID amounts. And that's where some of the uncertainty is happening. But we've been very lucky over the last couple of years to have CARES Act funding from the federal government and also to have ARPA dollars, American Rescue Plan dollars, to help us manage through COVID. This is something out of the budget. Our general fund budget by expenditure objects, as you can tell, about a little over fifty percent or fifty-six percent is our salaries and benefits. Our next one are services and pass-throughs. And then we have transfers out. The reason why it went down in 2023 over 2022 is there were some ARPA dollars for police vehicles that were, was put into the general fund and then transferred out to our fleet services for replacement. So, and that's not planned for 2023. In the Marina, presented this in the first public hearing, in the business-type activity, they have, they, they charge rates for the users of the Marina. There are no general fund tax dollars that go into the Marina. It's a self-supporting operation. In the budget, you can see that the capital improvement program is high because they're going to start the Marina dock replacement. And I believe we had some of that programmed in 2022, but it didn't, some of it occurred, the planning of it, but not the construction. So, and as you can tell, in the Marina, their rates cover the operating expenses and they have operating income excluding depreciation. And then they have, that affords them the ability to have their capital program. And the ending working capital is positive, even though, as you can see, it's going to be spent down some for the improvements on the infrastructure at the Marina. Key dynamics for the 2023 Marina Fund, per the Des Moines Municipal Code, mortgage shall be calculated each year beginning January first using CPI. All urban consumers, Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue, Washington area, for the period ending August 31st. The rate increase effective January 1st, 2023, is nine percent. And then we also, as I mentioned, the Marina Dock Replacement Capital Project. So they'll have quite a bit going on down there. Our other business-type activity is the surface water management, and rates are charged for the users of that system. And they have a similar thing where the operating income covers the operating expenses and that affords them the ability to use that money for their capital improvement program. And I believe that the SWIM master plan was updated last year. And during, when they do that, the capital program is planned out. So we've, we've picked up that improvement plan and also per the capital improvements plan document. plan document that was approved by council in September. SWIM, key dynamics for them. They also have an increase as part of the Des Moines Municipal Code. There's a calculation of thirty percent of the engineering construction cost index for Seattle, plus seventy percent of the Seattle CPI. So for January first, twenty twenty three, there's a ten point seven six percent increase on our SWIM rates. And then capital projects per the capital improvement plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Beth Ann. It will not, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who wishes to speak? Second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing, seeing no one has signed up to speak, council, do you have questions? And let's question, I was as guilty as anybody else. It's about questions particularly here, not comments. Seeing no one? I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Council, or Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I move to pass draft ordinance number twenty two dash zero six zero establishing the twenty twenty three annual budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Councilmember Nutting.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion before we take a vote? Council, or Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Just wanted to make a short statement. I appreciate it so much, the work of the staff. They've been working for a handful of months on this. And I personally worked hard to advocate for a safe, green destination community. It's how I measure everything that we do, since our budget is a statement of values. So I recognize the emphasis on obtaining and retaining staff. It's how we serve our community. And it's, it's the most basic and important thing that we need to do if we're going to serve, serve our community. So I feel like we worked hard. I worked hard. We did all we could, and this reflects incredible work battling inflation, workforce shortages, and COVID recovery. So my hearty thank you to, to Michael and the staff for producing this for us. Thank you.
I want to go with Councilmember Pennington, then you, Councilmember Harris.
Again, I'd like to echo those comments. You know, this is, this, the, the budget work starts after this budget gets passed for next year. I mean, you, you literally takes, because you have to take into consideration, you know, all these different programs and suggestions and things that are coming out. It's kind of, kind of like you wish you had a crystal ball that was accurate. And, and it's, you know, something that starts almost a year in advance. And I appreciate, you know, the work that staff has put in. I appreciate the budget retreat where you brought forward and shared with the things that were happening within the city. I, I don't believe that that gets out in the public domain enough. Because, and I've said this before, and I will continue to say it, the work that this council does would not be possible without each and every one of you sitting out there and setting up here. Because you're the experts. You're the ones that are the professionals. You're the ones that do the heavy lifting, and you're the ones that make the rest of us look good, or as best you can. So thank you so much for the work that you've done on this and the work that you continue to do to deliver the services and the safety and the goods to our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
I, I want to thank you. I know that transitioning any accounting system, and we haven't just transitioned one thing. We've transferred several major IT systems over the last couple of years. And I'm sure it's taken a couple of years off your life, and thank you. But it is my sense that you are a transitional figure and that the real work on our financial reporting has to begin with your successor. Because if we implement any of that marina redevelopment stuff, just the environment thing, where the two twenty-third steps and the bio swale, and if you do public-private partnerships and all of this monkey business, you're talking about a really complicated accounting system that will be hard to manage and grok. This is not a donut shop. This is a really complicated business, considering how small it is relative to, you know, there are just tons of departments, and they all feed into one another. And the goal, I would like to see the city long term create reports that are much easier for the layperson to understand where the money is flowing from. And two, you can find that stuff now, but it's work. It's real work. And we can make it easier, but that would have been like asking someone, you know, I mean, this is a multi-year kind of a deal. And so I hope that doesn't sound, you know, diminishing or anything. It's, you've done wonderful things. I'm just saying that part of the whole marina deal is going to be able to provide information for all of us to really understand where the money's coming and going, and that's it.
City Manager Mathias?
Yeah, wasn't quite sure where you were going. I don't think we need operationally to be lectured on the fact that, that Beth Ann retiring and Jeff picking up the reins is anything less than a complex process. And the result of that partnership between them, and you'll see on the consent agenda, there's a request from us to be able to employ a financial consultant, who's very skillful and has helped us previously, is well-understood. And the result of the efforts that you allude to is this budget with the level of complexity that Councilmember Pennington acknowledged. And I just want to say that, you know, this is a team approach. We could not have done the things we've done over the last six years, you saw, without the support of the council. And we do not operate based on the input of one single council member. But as a whole, take all of your comments into account as best we can and reflect them in the budget. So I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you.
I'll add that I have extreme confidence in, in your accountability as you move forward. I've been impressed. I've been watching the documents. I do a lot of budgetary work in my professional career. And I've found it to be superior, down to almost the last penny in a lot of cases. In fact, I know that when you do estimates and you're a few hundred dollars off, you take that home with you as a challenge to get better next year. So I'm very confident in what can be done. I want to thank you wholeheartedly. I love some of the new reporting we received this year and the additional information, and it is complex. And I don't think it's something that can be put down in four colors of crayon to make it so simple. It's, it is complex. The, the summary pages, though, are very simple. They're very direct and give us a good summation. So my compliments to you, and I think, again, you did some excellent work. Councilmembers of Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, I don't know if any of you know how to make donuts. But the fact is, you know how to run a city. I've been coming to council meetings for the better part of the last almost seven years now, really taking an interest in the way this city is run. These reports are getting better and better every year, and this is a huge improvement. And I don't think that's a stopping point. I don't think it's intended as a stopping point. I think there's always room for improvement, and I appreciate that. But, you know, you're doing a good job, and we appreciate it because you make our job easier. And a lot of the information that we can find in the budget now simply wasn't available five years ago. You just don't know where it is. And, and that's an important change, and I want you to know it's appreciated.
All right. With that being said, seeing no more comments, let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion to pass the draft ordinance of twenty two dash zero six, zero six zero. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes six zero. All right. Moving on to our third public hearing, which will be two thousand twenty two annual budget amendments. It'll be presented by Deputy Finance Director Jeff Friend, and with that, I will now open the public hearing number three. Good evening, council. Little gavel happy here.
I'm, I'm back.
It's like giving a kid a toy, right?
Okay, I'm here to present the twenty twenty two annual budget amendments. I would like to note that the reason that we do budget amendments to the current budget is because as you go through the budget process in the prior year, you aren't a perfect I lost that word. I want to say procrastinator, and I know that's wrong. Prognosticator. Things happen that, that you weren't aware of the prior year, and so the state allows us to amend the current budget. So, next slide. This slide shows the revenue adjustments and the expenditure adjustments for the general fund and then all other funds on the second line. So on the general fund, you can see a little over a million dollar revenue adjustment is an increase. And one for expenditures in the blue there is a little bit higher, one point oh seven million of an increase. So the net adjustment is an increase of about thirty eight thousand dollars of an increase in expenditures. For other funds, the revenue adjustment would be an increase collectively of about one point five million. The adjustment to expenditures there in blue is about one point four. So that's a ninety nine thousand dollar increase net in favor of revenue. So altogether, citywide, the net impact of the budget adjustments is in the favor of revenue increasing about sixty one thousand dollars. I did not include the details in the slide, but I do want to speak to them, and they are located in the agenda packet. So in terms of the general fund, what is included in all those adjustments for revenues are increases in utility taxes, franchise fees, and the criminal justice sales tax. So those are revenue categories where basically we've received and are projecting to receive more than was in the original budget. There's also grants that are accounted for in the general fund. There is a city assistance grant, Washington State grant for the court, FEMA public assistance grant, and a WASPC mental health grant that the police received. And all those are accounted for in the budget amendment, the budget amendments, as you see. They also have offsetting expenditures, so the net impact is net zero dollars. On top of that, there are, in the details, there is something called a computer intra-fund maintenance that you can see is being reduced on both the revenue side and the expenditure side. That, those are transfers that are within the general fund, and we're trying to end that practice of transferring funds within the same fund. It's just a waste of effort that has no impact on anything. So we'd rather not do the paperwork for that. So that's why those are being reduced. Those are just fees for, that are paid to the IT department from other general fund departments for computer maintenance. And there's just no point in, in making those transfers. Salary was one of the items in the general fund that had substantial increase, but half of that was basically parks and events, where in twenty twenty one, we weren't sure if the programs would be up and running, but they were, and so we want to capture that in the budget. And also rental revenues, speaking of parks and events, was also up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So those are the, the highlights of the general fund. On the other funds, one of the big items was the removal of some ARPA transfers between some of those funds. And that's really just a timing thing, where some projects either haven't started, may not start, but were planned in, in the budget to occur in twenty twenty two. But as the city manager pointed out, we have till twenty twenty six to actually spend the funds. So instead of keeping those transfers on the books, we're just removing those transfers. Also, the passenger ferry is accounted for in the waterfront zone fund in the budget adjustments. And also transfers related to the approval of the CIP that occurred earlier this year. Those are being included in the budget now. And finally, there are increases to our REIT funds because the housing market was really hot earlier in the year, and so we had more REIT, real estate excise tax come in than expected. And that concludes my presentation. So the final slide has the suggested motion for the ordinance.
All right, here's the fun, fun part. Is there anyone who didn't speak, sign up to, that wishes to speak? Second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak?
No one signed up to.
Seeing none? Council, do you have any questions at this time? It's like falling on deaf ears, you know? I got, I got a question. If you could just go back to the slide before that. Through your simple slide. So I think, are you telling us that through all these millions of dollars and the adjustments and so forth, basically what you're asking for in the bottom line is an adjustment of sixty one thousand dollars, or sixty one thousand two hundred and one dollars?
Uh, citywide, yes.
That's impressive. That's my question. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to suspend Rule twenty six A in order to enact draft ordinance number two two dash zero six four on first reading.
Second.
Of a second by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead. Take a vote on the first motion. All those in favor? I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Harris. The motion passes five one. Moving on, Council, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number two two dash zero six four relating to the municipal finance amending the twenty twenty two annual budget adopting, adopted in ordinance number one, seven, five, three.
Second.
Of a second by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the second motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Harris. Motion passes five one. All right, we will move on. Now to, that concludes, that concludes all of our public hearings. As exciting and riveting as those tend to be, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And with that, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, acceptance of Washington State Administrative Offices of the Courts, Des Moines Municipal Court, inter-agency agreement. Item four, Flock camera agreement. Item five, Marcock Consulting Contract Amendment Number One, and that concludes the consent calendar, mayor.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Do you have a second? I'll take Councilmember Pennington this time. Is there any council member that wishes to remove an item? Councilmember Harris?
I'd like to remove items four and five.
Councilmember, our, items four and five are removed on the request of Councilmember Harris. With that, we will vote on council, on items one, two, and three. All those, all those in favor of these being on consent, raise your right hand. Obviously, passes six zero, and now we will move on to item four. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
So this involves the Flock camera agreement and
I am wondering if there's any information as to monitoring, some kind of data reporting as to its efficacy after one year, six months, two years? Basically, is there some way to evaluate the value that it is providing? Yeah, is it fighting crime, basically?
Chief, you want to?
Any takers there?
Thank you. Good evening. We don't have, we haven't written down on a piece of paper in one year. We're going to look at it and see if it works. If it's working, we're going to continue with the process. And if we see that it's not working, we're going to discontinue the process and not do the program anymore. I can tell you, so far, it's been operating in Yakima, and I'm aware of two homicide investigations that have been, where the suspects have been identified with the use of the Flock camera capturing the back license plate of the vehicle, which led to tips for successful at least investigation of those cases. They're not concluded yet, but it certainly gave the detectives leads to proceed with. So it's, we believe it's going to work. It's worked throughout the country. It's working in the one place. It's up and operating in our state, and we, like every program we have, will look at it and evaluate it and move forward as the information reflects.
Councilmember Harris still has the floor.
Well, I, I would just, I would just, so I read the testimonials at their, you know, website, and they, some of the, you know, every department is different, of course, but some of the chiefs, they had certain metrics they were using, you know, to say it reduced property crime eighteen percent, and you know, and I, I'm like, okay, well, how did you evaluate that? And so I was just wondering, is there, are you going to generate a report of some kind that, that says, wow, we had this many incidents, and now we have this many, and, you know, thank you, Flock cameras, for saving the city of Des Moines, you know, such and such. You see what I'm getting at? I just.
Are you asking a question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead and ask me a question.
How do you quantify success?
Well, we'll look at it and see what happens. We're, we, we track crime data all the time. We pay attention to it. The Flock camera is not the end-all, be-all of our crime-fighting sources. It's one tool. No, let me finish, if you ask me a question. It's a crime-fighting tool. It's one piece. We'll do a full comprehensive analysis when we're done, and we will report that back to the council, if that's what the council wishes.
So like, like in a year, let's say?
I think I will be here and asking the city manager to be on the city manager's report, report the very first time we solve a crime. There, this isn't a secret. I hope I'm here way more than just waiting one year to add it all up. I think it's an, an interactive thing. I think it's a great opportunity. It's a great tool for our region, not just our community, but in concert with Kent and Taquilla and the Federal Way cameras, it's a big-picture crime-fighting. And gosh, I'm going to come up here every chance the city manager lets me and, and talk about if it's successful. If it's not successful, I'll be talking to the city manager and saying, hey, let's save some money, and, and it's just not working out, and, and the contract.
Chief, I'd like to just add to that, that you know, it may be logical to think that each crime-fighting tool has sort of its own universe of data and facts and outcomes, but in fact, it's a strategy, an integrated strategy for dealing with crime. And that's what I think the chief is referring to, that operationally, all these different components of ways to identify the bad guys and catch them fall together and should reinforce each other, and that's what we'll be looking forward to see with the Flock cameras accomplish that. Bear, thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz, you have the floor.
Thank you. Chief, what's before us tonight is the agreement between the city and the Flock Camera Corporation. The Flock Camera Corporation is not the ones that's going to do an evaluation of whether you caught six bad guys this month or five. This is just, we're going to agree to their terms to use the cameras, and then internally, you're going to do the evaluation. Isn't that how this process works?
That's correct.
So, any evaluation has nothing to do with what is actually before the council tonight, correct?
That's correct.
And I would encourage you to come back and share successes and failures if that is the case, but we do want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I would be happy to.
All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. You took the words right out of my mouth. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the agreement with Flock for the installation and use of license plate reading cameras, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as attached.
Second. I have a Councilmember Pennington with the second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six, zero. All right, Councilmember Harris, you have the floor on the Marcot Consulting Contract Amendment One.
Sure. So it's, the payout is like forty-nine thousand five this year, but it says it's for a hundred and twenty-five total spend. Is that, does that imply that we're going to be going out to two thousand twenty-five with the, yeah? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
That's okay. No, if you look at the contract extension, it goes out through the December of thirty, of two thousand twenty-three. So right now, we're looking at a constant, a concentrated effort to do our renewals for the file local in our business license and B and O tax system. So we're going to use some capacity, probably about anywhere from forty to sixty here in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. That provides some additional capacity for Jeff to use consulting services while he's training staff in their new positions, but it, it's, it will be entirely up to him, his discretion, whether he needs that or not. So I just put an upper limit of capacity if he gets a project or something that he needs assistance with, but he doesn't have to spend up to that amount.
Do you perceive requiring her, their services past two thousand twenty-three sort of as an ongoing kind of a resource?
Let me answer that, since I'll be sitting here in two thousand twenty-three and Beth Ann won't. But I, I'd just like to say that's completely up the discretion of Jeff and how it goes and how finance is working in our new financial management system you alluded to functions, and how smoothly that transition takes place. And we are trying to assure, as we do with every department, that there will be a successful transition in leadership. And this is a support system to help facilitate that. So that's all, that's the information we know at this time, and we will update the council if there's a change in that.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
You know, I think this is maybe for the city manager more than you, Beth Ann, but can you explain to us what the logic is between using consultants who are not employees and have relatively short-term life, although it can get extended, versus hiring a long-term employee to do the position, and how does that impact the city our size?
You, you got a drink for that question. Thank you.
I think it's important for everybody to understand that.
No, I appreciate that. I think that, I think the difference is, you know, and the quality of the consultant is everything. So you want someone you trust and can work with, and that's capable of accomplishing what you need. But I think the difference is that, and you, you said it exactly, is that that's a discretionary relationship that you can end at any time. If you bring on a full-time employee, now, now you're involved with a lot more complexity relative to if it doesn't work out. Or, as we are now in the situation with this budget, as we're explaining to council and, and with your support, that there are a lot of unknowns. And so what we think might be a critical need today, six months from now, may be less of a critical need relative to something else that needs to be addressed. So instead of making that commitment, and, and it's important when it's necessary, but it's not always necessary, making a commitment to a full-time employee with benefits and salary and a number of protections that exist, all of which are fine, but that versus working with a consultant with a defined scope that's accountable to that scope and which we can end at any time we choose, gives us more freedom and flexibility to address changing conditions. That, yeah?
Thank you.
Just let me know what you want.
Any, any, any further discussion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve Amendment Number One to the contract with Marcot Consulting, expanding the scope of work, extending the time of the completion, and authorizing the additional compensation for the purpose of providing consulting services to the support, to support the finance department, and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment substantially in the form as attached.
Second. Councilmember Pennington seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six, zero. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Draft ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-six-nine, suspending restriction on use of one-time revenue for two thousand twenty-three, and Finance Director Beth Ann Rowe will give the presentation.
Okay, well, I don't have a presentation prepared.
Well, it says you do right here.
Oh, it does? Let me see, what can I come up with? More of the discussion. In, when we first did the, the first public hearing on the budget, you know, everything is balanced and resources, and we presented that to you. Since that time, we've been working with an open negotiation on a contract, and there was some parameters that were outside what I put in the budget. And so in talking to the city manager, one of the strategies is to make sure that we can address the market conditions and to make us flexible was to request council to suspend that restriction of using or retaining the one-time sales tax in the general fund. So that is the request to council.
I've got a question that I'll start with. How much money are we talking about?
About two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred.
Two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question. Anybody else? Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, and can, can you help me understand, Beth Ann, a little bit? What are these one-time sales taxes that you're not anticipating we're going to have next year, because it's one time, right?
Correct. Basically, there is in the Des Moines Municipal Code that projects that come into the city that are valued over fifteen million dollars that are developed, any sales tax that we receive or business and occupation tax that we receive on those projects from the construction companies, those are earmarked and moved into the one-time category, because you're not going to continually build those large projects. So those get moved over into the Fund Three-O-Nine, which is a one-time sales tax sources for funding of capital projects. So they're not to be used for operations. But through COVID, I believe we requested that in two thousand twenty-one to maintain our fund balance. And so since these additional items came up, we're requesting that for two thousand twenty-three. We will continue to be conservative in how we manage things, and if there's a possibility of not having to use them, we can come back to council and let you know, because we, we, we understand it is one time, and we don't use it, want to use it for operations. But we feel with the market conditions and some of these things that came up, this will allow us some flexibility to address some issues and to move forward.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, normally, this, these kinds of funds would be used to buy a truck or something along those lines?
To be moved for capital improvements, to build something like
Build something.
Roads, sidewalks, municipal capital, you know, that type of thing.
Okay, so it's not even vehicles. It's, it's just really hard. I don't even know what the proper term is. Infrastructure.
Structure, yes.
Okay, and, and the use of this two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred, I think you said, is now going to be just in, in addition to the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember.
Thank you, I understand.
Councilmember Nutting?
I just have one comment. You know, I worked with Dave Kaplan to get this legislation passed. When we did, with the understanding that we could rescind it and move forward, and I appreciate hearing the words conservative moving forward, because that, that was the whole intent of this piece of legislation. And I did it reluctantly then. I do it reluctantly now, but I understand the need for it and where it's coming from. We have been in a tough three years and now going into a slight recession. I see the need for it. So with that, I make the motion. I move to suspend Rule twenty-six A in order to enact draft ordinance number two-two dash zero-six-nine on the first reading.
I'll second it, and then I'd like to make a comment after that.
Second, second on the motion. Any discussion I want to keep to twenty-six A on this one, on the next one, will be any comments or questions. So it's just pertaining to twenty-six A.
No comment on twenty-six A.
Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Harris. Motion passes five, one. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number twenty-two, excuse me, number two-two dash zero-six-nine, amending DMMC three dot one zero zero dot zero two zero and lifting the restriction on the use of one-time revenue in the general fund budget for the year two thousand twenty-three.
I see Councilmember Pennington with the second, and then I'll yield the floor to Councilmember Pennington, knowing he has a comment.
Thank you. I, along with Councilmember Nutting, worked with then-Mayor Kaplan to, to pass this legislation. This was part of the, the foundation piece of what we needed to do to get this city back onto a, a sustainable long-term footing. And so I, I, obviously, I support this. I too, when I read it and, and thought about it, had some reluctance, because it was, it was designed for exactly what we just went through this last two years. We, we find ourselves, as we, as a community, as a country, as we come out of this COVID, and we come out of, 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 you know, these times that, that we are in some, some pretty interesting times and, and pretty tough times. And I, so with that, I agree that, that, you know, this is a proper use of these funds. And, and, you know, the, the, this will be for future councils, you know? I, I hope they come back and take a look and understand why we, we had this, this legislation. Understand why we conservatively make an exception to the legislation. So with that, I'll, I'll continue to support it, continue to monitor what the expenses are. It, it, it's important. It's important for the longevity of the city that we be very, very careful with our one-time monies, because that's what saved our, our, our city here over the last couple of years. So that, that's it.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I just, I, I want everybody to know that this is a, as I read it, is a one-year waiver of that. If it was any more than that, I would not be voting for it. It is a dangerous proposition or habit to get into, as Des Moines has seen from before. That's the, the reference that Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Pennington are making. Part of the problem that we had financially several years ago now is that one-time money had been used to fund ongoing projects, and there was just a lot of moving money around from Peter to pay Paul until it all eventually came to rest, came to roost in a, in a, in a problem that had to be addressed. So as a one-time, coming out of the pandemic, dealing with a recession, I understand why we might want to do that, but this, this really should not be a habit, and I don't know that I would support this next year unless economic situation, the economic situation is really terrible, and I hope it isn't. So, thank you.
City Manager Mathias?
Just one comment, you know, how all these things are related, and you know, removing ourselves from dependence on one-time money for structural expenditures was sixty, seventy percent of the solution to what our financial challenges had been, right? But one of the things that this allows for, so But one of the things that this allows for, so one of the actions council took actually to protect us was to raise the fund balance requirements. So we were always in a position of safety because we had sufficient reserves to last for periods of time. This one-time money enhances our fund balance at this point, and it's something we'll review in the coming year, you know, based on is there need or not? And we've not really relied on this until there were exceptional economic circumstances with COVID and inflation and other aspects of this. So, yeah, we're careful of that, but it plays into a larger dynamic of safety that we've encouraged and included in our budget. So your comments are spot on, and if we have to come back next year and say, gee whiz, it went badly or things are worse, we'll do that, but it'll always be on a year-by-year, case-by-case basis.
Councilmember Harris?
So when was the original ordinance passed? Twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen?
I believe it was twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve? Okay. I seem to remember, because I attended my first city council meeting in two thousand and eight, and I seem to remember several years where it was basically being overridden every year until like twenty-seventeen. And I could be wrong, but it seems to me like we've honored that in the breach more than we've actually honored it in its lifetime. I will vote against this because basically that's the community center we'll never have. That it, and the reason we, you know, our bacon was saved by getting in a lot more revenue, more than anything else. We just got nine million in ARPA money, and if ever there was a time to start doing the right things, it's now. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more, let's take a vote on the motion to move to enact draft ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-six-nine. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris. Motion passes five-one. Moving on to our next item of business in the new business is a staff presentation by City Manager Michael Mathias and Anthony Hempstead on the legislative, our legislative advocate on our legislative priorities.
Mayor, let me, let me begin. Pleased to have Anthony here tonight. The, since we engaged Anthony, I would say our city has been exceedingly successful in its legislative pursuits. And I think one of the things that you'll see tonight, which is a, a strategy that council adopted probably three years ago, had to do with identifying very fundamental basic needs, no more than four, five, possibly six. And that allows Anthony to go talk with our legislators with very specific requests. And that's been very successful, and that largely is due to his skill, skill set. But one thing I want to just point out also is that we approach the legislature probably on two different levels. And one are specific projects for Des Moines that we've said we need this, whether it be funds for Redondo or funds for, you know, we got some money to do planning for two-twenty-third to buy soil and so forth. So those are specific to the city of Des Moines. But also, we're engaged in partnerships with other entities, including WASPIC and AWC and other agencies that have broader needs that affect the city. So you'll see both of those reflected in Anthony's presentation, but I just wanted to kind of emphasize for you that some of it's in partnership and some of it's, you know, we just ask Senator Kaiser to step aside quietly and say, we need, no, I'm just, but, but just what the needs for the city are. So Anthony, please.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor Mahoney, counselors, Michael, Public and Staff, it, it's good to see everyone in, in person again. I, I believe the last three times I presented to council, it's been on Zoom, and, and it's, it is nice to be here, you know, back in person, although with, with all the presentations ahead of time, I, I missed the ability to, you know, go out and stretch and juggle and things, which probably wouldn't be socially acceptable here, you know, in council chambers. But today, we'll, we'll briefly go, go through the legislative priorities and how things are looking for the upcoming session. Okay, I, I, today, I, we will look at the session and what the key opportunities are that we think exist. Looking first backwards on what happened this year, twenty-twenty-two, I, as Michael mentioned, I, I think twenty-twenty-two, likely, the most successful year that we've had with the city of Des Moines for getting our legislative agenda completely through. We, we basically got everything that we're looking for in Olympia this year, included two funding programs, three-point-five million for Barnes Creek Trail and three-hundred-and-nine-thousand for the Green Street project on two-twenty-third. Next slide, please. I, and beyond asking for funding, we also went after a, a couple of, of specific policy issues. First, it was something that, that came up through the Des Moines Public Safety Committee, was a, a real concern about catalytic converter theft here in, in Des Moines. And another was on street racing down in Redondo. So I, those, those are the types of issues that, as a mid-sized city like, like Des Moines, if we get behind them and show leadership and really push on things, I, we can get success. And with both of those things, we, we had them passed into legislation last year. With catalytic converters, Mayor Mahoney was, was a great partner in that, I think testified every, every step along the, the process. And it's very rare to go in for a first-time bill and have it passed in, in a, in one session, which, which we did last year. Part of that bill, I, it, it had a variety of reforms, but it, it also set up a, a task force or a work group that, I, since Des Moines was, was a real leader on, on last year's legislation, the Association of Washington Cities appointed Des Moines to represent all cities on that. And Mayor Mahoney and I have spent probably more time than we had anticipated on this work.
Would be true.
Yes, but, and then also with street racing, I, I, there was a, a budget proviso that, that existed, and so that cities like ours can get several, several cameras to, to help Ken and his team as a force multiplier in trying to address some of these, these difficult issues. So looking, looking forward to the state of play now, very briefly on the federal level, and then also Washington State Legislature. Of course, it seems like a long time ago, but we had elections just last week, you know, how, how time flies. Back on the federal level, as I'm sure all of you know, the Democrats will retain, retain control of the US Senate, but there will be Republican control in the House. That, that split, split between those two bodies means unfortunately, we will very likely have even greater dysfunction in Washington DC than we have in recent years. So I would expect that very little legislation will pass in Washington DC. The one, the things that will pass, though, will be budgets because they have to pass. And depending on what happens with earmarks, because they, they reallowed earmarks two years ago, very, very clunky process, I, I, actually, and, and it was difficult for cities to compete. Most of these earmarks turned out being quite small and going to nonprofit groups. So I, I, as Des Moines, we looked at it hard, we applied one year, but again, we really had to contort ourselves to even fit within the, the regulations that they needed. There's a, there's already a lot of talk about what might happen with earmarks. It might become much more flexible as earmarks used to be a few years ago, but on the other extreme, they might disappear. So we will be watching this closely. If there's an opportunity to go for earmarks, we will. We haven't put anything together yet as far as what asks might be because it's completely theoretical right now, and we'll, we can revisit that come January if it makes sense. If earmarks do exist going forward, Washington State will probably be very, very well placed. Patty Murray, Senator who was just re-elected last week, I, beyond becoming President Pro Tem, which means she is third in line to be the US President. If, if the President, Vice President are incapacitated, we will have President Murray. But beyond that, she also has, I, this just happened today, she, she switched her committee emphasis, and she will be Chairman of the Appropriations Committee. So if there are flexible earmarks, that's a great thing for Washington State. The last time that Washington State was fortunate enough to have that was with Warren Magnussen when he was the Senator for forty-four years and, and, and the last roughly decade or so, he was Chairman of Appropriations, and he, he had a very fair policy where, and, and they had much more flexible earmarks there, where half of programs could, could go to the rest of the United States and half could go to Washington State, which seemed, seems reasonable. But, but it will unlikely be quite that flexible going forward, but, but hopefully there might be something we, we could go after there in the future. So we'll revisit that as, as appropriate. We do know the rules in Washington, Washington State itself, though, with the legislature, and we will definitely be coming in to Olympia with asks for this coming session. Session is convening, I, in just under two months. It's a, a long session this year where they, they write the budget, should go a hundred and five days with potentially special sessions. In addition to that, with the election that, that did just happen last week, I, I, there had been expected to be quite a bit of movement, and when I wrote your memo way back a few days ago, I, there was much more movement then than there is now as votes continue, continue to be tabulated and several seats that looked like they flipped last week have now flipped back. So, okay, with the big caveat that there are still two House seats that are extremely close, within a couple hundred votes, and so that number may change again, but we, we do expect it to be twenty-nine to twenty in the House, and fifty-seven to forty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-nine, twenty Senate, fifty-seven, forty-one, House. So robust Democratic majorities in, in both. Of course, locally, the, the only change in representation for, for Des Moines is down in the thirtieth district where Christine Reeves has returned to the House, but with her experience and having served as a House member, we, we expect that she will hit the ground running. She was great to work with in the past, and, and we're very much looking forward to working with her in the future. On the budget and how it's looking, I, I think City Manager Mathias gave a great background. You can tell that his masters from Columbia, from Cambridge and Oxford are, are showing through their, on, on economics. But yes, we're, it's a strange time, and, and these crystal balls are very, very cloudy right now. I, it's the best of times and it's the worst of times. I met with someone from the Treasurer's Office at, at lunch today and, and with the Senate Minority Leader yesterday, talking about outlook, and, and both were somewhat guffawing. The ERFC, the Economic Revenue Forecast Council, they come out with their updated forecasts tomorrow, but even that, it's going to change a lot because just in the last few days, as we've heard with Amazon and, and Meta and Microsoft with, with major layoffs here in the Seattle area, those things ripple and, and they have, they have impact. And so, like the Senate Minority Leader was saying, hey, we're expecting probably a, between a four and a five billion dollar outlook for a surplus going forward, but at the same time, all of that money is probably spent. So it's, it's odd. Partly as City Manager Mathias did say, with, with this very high inflation rate, that, that throws all sorts of, of curveballs in. So more money is coming in, but there's going to be higher expenses as well. The collective bargaining contracts that, that the legislature doesn't actually have a direct role in, that's between the governor and, and state labor unions. That cost is going to be very considerable, and that in itself is going to eat up much of, of the surplus. That being said, there will be capital budgets, there will be operating budgets, and it's worth our looking hard at, at prospects there. From most groups that, including the governor, of, of what we've been hearing, that they've been saying are big priorities for the coming session, housing is going to be huge, housing policy, and, and, and much of that will, of course, have direct impact on what we do here at the city of Des Moines, public safety as well, and then it's a, it's a budget year. So those will be the issues that dominate, and then, of course, there'll be other wildcards that come in as well. Next slide, please. So what's, in working with, with staff and looking at what the, what could be reasonable asks to go down to Olympia with? First off, looking at the Redondo Fishing Pier. We've been very successful, we've gotten money twice already for this project, first in planning and second for construction. Unfortunately, the nine-hundred thousand that we got for construction, we haven't been able to spend it yet because just like with the, with Bulkhead, with the North Bulkhead, it has been so hard to get permits from the feds. And, and I, we're in a batch with, with many other projects in Puget Sound that nothing is moving yet. But through great, great work from Andrew, Andrew and his team, I, I, it is likely we will have permits and be able to go, go forward. But we will have to get, very likely, the, the nine-hundred thousand that, that we did have allocated for, for that project, we need to have it reallocated because we, we won't be able to spend it before the end of the, of the fiscal year. But with the aforementioned inflation, I, that's not enough money to build it now. And, I, I, and with, with also more requirements that are coming in with these federal permits, we need another million, just, just for the fishing pier itself. So we are going hunting for that. In a perfect world, while that, the million for the pier itself is going to be a priority, but there's also landside improvements, that would be another one-point-six million. That's probably a reach goal, I will say here, but, but it would be great if we could get that as well. That is in the thirtieth district, and it used to be right on the border between the thirtieth and the thirty-third. It, thirtieth has moved north further, and so we will ask our, our thirty-third legislators to help with that as well, but it's, it's not so close to their district anymore, so that's a, that's a, that's a reach goal too. But, but definitely will, we'll be working very closely with our delegation on, on this ask. very closely with our delegation on, on this ask. Next, a, a new, new project with the Marina Steps. And again, with, with everything that the city is trying to do to, to move that overall project forward and to continue the Renaissance of downtown Des Moines and connecting that with the Marina floor, the Marina Steps is a, is a central part of that. And, and will also hopefully be part of the catalyst to help bring private investment down to that area. So hopefully it will be a, a huge boon for, for Des Moines, but it would be great to get state help in, in such a strategic project. And so we're, we're looking for, for a $2 million ask on, on that. Transportation, while Des Moines was only one of 30 communities around the state to be able to get an earmark for one of its local projects last year in the 16-year transportation project that was approved, very, very frustratingly, WashDOT didn't allocate those funds for use this year because there weren't years that were attached to those projects. So those 30 projects, none of them got built this year. And so they're saying, well, we need guidance and we need guidance from the legislature. So we're going back this year and saying, okay, we have the money, but we, we need the legislature to tell WashDOT when to spend it. And, and so we, we will be jockeying to try to get that as soon as possible. Of course, the, the, the hope had been that that would be done when the Sound Transit Station opens so that there's a pedestrian access through High Line and through neighborhoods to the new station. But hopefully we'll get that, that, that time down along with the money that is appropriated for it. Okay. Then on policy, of course, many, many, many different issues will be engaged on in, in the coming months. But again, like last year, I, I think we do best when, as a mid-sized city, we spend our time really trying to champion just a couple of things. And, and then do a bunch of me twos, as appropriate to, where if the Seattle's and Spokane's and Vancouver's are, are out pushing resources behind it, okay, sure, if, if Des Moines does too, that helps, but, but we're not going to be blazing those trails. But our mid-sized issues, catalytic converters, again, since the Mayor and I have, have been working hard on that task force and there will be a recommendation for more comprehensive legislation coming out of that task force. And it will make sense for Des Moines to continue being, being a leader on trying to push back on, on that, the outbreak of theft that, that has happened on catalytic converters and it's definitely been impacting many people in, in Des Moines and, and South County. Also, we, we won't necessarily be the leader, or certainly won't be the, the leader on Blake, but Blake is going to be a huge issue that's going to be discussed in the coming months. The legislature passed temporary legislation two years ago that expires in the coming months. It has to be addressed. It's a huge issue for our courts and our public safety personnel. I, I think has a real negative impact on public safety generally. And so it, it is going to be one of the biggest topics and because of, of just the extent of the impact on Des Moines, I think, even though we will not be the player, we need to be a player. We, we, we need to be involved in, in that discussion. And then the Citizens Advisory Committee that was set up partly due to our, our delegation and this council or previous councils putting, putting that as a priority of thinking long term and, and knowing that this community is, has such impact from the airport that long-term, we need to get another airport. And so we were very involved in, in that legislation that set the CACC up. They're looking for a new airport location. It's already become very controversial, but their final recommendation will be coming out in the middle of next year. I think working very closely with our legislative delegation on what do we need to put in the budget now to keep that moving forward? Because there will be a big push by some people, especially where these airports might, by some legislators, where it might go to, to not do anything further. Always easier to have inertia and unless there's, there's some pushing for, for progress, it will be hard for that, that to happen. So would, would recommend we, we have that on our, our agenda as well. Again, certainly there'll be many other issues that do come up, but, but these, these could be priorities. And that might be the last slide, but just checking in case. That is the last slide. Okay. So question, comments?
Let's go to Councilmember Nottingham.
I, I think your legislative priorities, the list that you laid out in front of us is spot on and encompasses a wide range of areas in the city and, and what our potential goals are. So with that, I'm going to make the motion to approve the 2023 City Council Legislation Priorities as presented.
Seconded by Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Before we go into discussion or take a vote, I want to actually add one thing. I want to add the banning of the sale of aftermarket mufflers, installation and sales of vehicles manufactured with the capability to adjust vehicle volume. And the reason why, particularly our residents who are here today in Redondo and all over the city and several Mayors I've spoke to who will support the same thing are sick and tired of it and would like to see something done. Idaho and New York have done this and I would like to see that added. So I'd like to make that friendly amendment.
I, I will accept that amendment.
Okay. And second it. All right. Any other discussion before we take a vote? I'm going to start with Councilmember Harris.
Well, I'd like to discuss your amendment. Anthony, what do you see as the amount of effort you would put into working such a, an issue? And what is the likelihood of passage either this year or, you know, in year two, three? Because sometimes these things take a while.
Good, good questions, Councilor Harris. Normally...
Because just, just understand that, you know, in heart, I am all on board.
Yes.
I just want to find out what the...
Right, right.
You, you keep emphasizing that, you know, time you've got, you know, a certain window that you want to work.
Right. Often, it takes multiple years to get a new idea passed through the legislature. We hit it just right with catalytic converters last year and, and we're able to, to move that one very, very quickly. But we shouldn't expect that. I, I, I think that's the exception rather than, than the rule. But it, it helps when there, when there's not going to be an organized group against a policy that, that we're pushing. And I'm, I'm thinking as I'm speaking of, okay, who might, who might oppose this? Sometimes it's surprising you think this, there's no one's going to oppose it.
No, I, my company did work for an aftermarket company and they are serious about promoting their products. That's why I think the opposition might...
Okay, okay. Well, yeah. No, when, when there's organized opposition, it makes it much, much tougher to, to pass something, especially right out. But, but it, it can also be very helpful to introduce it on idea, get it out there, start discussing it, and you might be in a much better position then to pass it the, the following year. Or you can work things out and, and, and get it pushed as long as we find the right champion. Because no bill goes anywhere unless, unless you get a legislator who can feel as passionate about it as, as, as we do. Wonderful if it's a local. Currently, we don't really have a public safety expert in our delegation. Okay, it, it depends on where Christine Reeves gets, gets assigned. But, but, okay, I'm being long-winded on this.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get an idea of, you know, you know, 10%, 70%, whatever. But thank you. You've been very, you've, you've answered the question.
Yeah. I, 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 I think it's a good issue. I, I think it's worth a shot. And again, I guess on all of this, we'll step, step back and say, we had an exceptionally good year last year. And, and should have prefaced all of this of, that's only because we have a great delegation in both the 33rd and 30th. We couldn't, couldn't do that without their leadership and help. But I also want to lower expectations. Sometimes they hit it out of the ballpark, sometimes they don't. This, this agenda that, that we, that we're discussing right now, it's ambitious. And I, I doubt we will be able to hit or get everything this year like we did last year. So just because it's here, it doesn't mean we, we have it. But yeah.
I'm just going to interject before I call the next member of council. Obviously, I've been having discussions. I've got Skateboard, which it was added to their legislative agenda. And in my conversation with not only the South End Mayors, but several others, they have told me that they would sign on to a letter so we can add additional pressure. Plus, I know a lot of citizens that would particularly raise up their flag on their local legislators to encourage them to do so. So I think it has a better chance than most might think. Go with Councilmember Steinmetz first, then you, Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Trumpstead, thank you very much for a good, a good solid presentation and, and the realism is, is very much appreciated. So, you know, I get that. But every bill's got to start in year one. It may take three years to get it through. But is there a capacity issue? Ultimately, what I was hearing is on your plate, is there a capacity issue by adding the muffler bill on?
I, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable that, that we'll be able to, to handle, handle that. But, but definitely, if, if, if we are the main mover of that, that's a lot more work than on some of these other issues where, again, we're, we're me twos, as opposed to me's.
Okay. Well, I think there are going to be several main movers.
Yeah.
From what I understand from Mayor Mahoney. Secondly, is on the Barnes Creek Trail, you indicated that the real issue is that there wasn't a year designated when that money was to be spent. Any chance of getting it into the 2022 supplemental budget this year as maybe a proviso in order to avoid the mess at the end and just get it done earlier? At least the years in there? Because the, the money's already there, right?
Right. But, but there, there, there are 30 projects and, and every local jurisdiction is, on, on, on most of them, they, they want it sooner rather than 16 years from now. So there, there is going to be a scrum there on, on, on trying to get the funds sooner rather than later. But, but, but we, we, we will, we will look at a, at a variety of different ways on, on, on trying to move it up.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I don't know what the, what the prospects are, or how contentious the 2022 supplemental budget's going to be, but there's always one. There's always a supplemental. Anyway, worth considering.
Point border, Mayor. Shall we not vote on your amendment and then move on to the general?
Well, if it's a friendly amendment to add it to what already exists, so I would read, the, the only thing would be is I would move to, the only thing we would do is move to approve the 23 City Council Legislative Priorities as amended. And all, and he said he would do a friendly amendment. So in my book, we've already done that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think it would, I think it, I think it would be cleaner. There was a motion to...
Fair enough. Thank you, Councilmember Harris for pointing that out. All right. So those that, those in favor of...
I still have a discussion point then.
Okay. But, but let's clear up this, you, on this particular item. Okay, then I'll give that to you and then we'll take it, a vote on the amendment.
Thank you. So the reason why I think it might not be helpful to go with a friendly amendment at this point is if we are trying to negotiate for where you want to put your emphasis and if we have another thing that we want to bring to the table and then we need to weigh them, then we may say, well, just to decide where you want to put your emphasis. So that's why I think it's a good idea maybe to wait.
I think the time, the, the iron's hot right now to get...
No, wait until we're done discussing what we're going to add to the legislative agenda.
Okay. Well, now let's, let's go ahead and see if this can be added in. We've gone this far. And then we can just, we can, we can discuss any, any other items anybody wants to discuss.
Okay. Then I have one more point. In weighing whether we do this or something else, the only thing I have, if we decide to trade it for another emphasis, is that this particular item is going to be more difficult to enforce than maybe some other things.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, I would say this is a process where over time, as they, when I read into it, after they eliminate or they ban the sales, those states weren't to get it and the life expectancy of these types of devices are not long.
Okay.
So it's a process over time. Enforcing it's one thing, but cutting, cutting the, cutting the head off is where I'm going here, right? In that, in that philosophy. I don't think it's too burdensome of an additional quest. So let's, as my friendly amendment is to add the banning of the sale of the aftermarket muffler installation, sales of vehicles and manufacturer with the capability of just, our vehicles with the capability to adjust vehicle volume be added to the existing items on the legislative agenda. And I have, do I have a second?
Second.
With any, any further discussion, should we just take a vote? Is that good? All those in favor, raise your hand. It passes 6-0, so it's added to the agenda. Okay, let's proceed with the rest of the conversation and then we'll, we'll do the agenda as amended. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So with regard to the $309,000, does that face the same kind of, for lack of a better word, expiration as with the fishing pier money? I'm just, it's like, it's great that you're getting the planning money for the 2/23rd thing, but, you know, I mean, how, how do you, how do you sequester that so that it'll be there when you need it?
Yes. And, and it, it would, but, but luckily I understand through Andrew that, that it is being spent. And, and so, so all of that 309 for the 2/23rd will, will be spent before the end of, of the fiscal year. So, so we, we won't need to ask for reallocation of that.
Okay. Couple other things. Let's see here. So, so what's the timeline for implementing the speed cams if you're saying we've been successful in, you know, getting that allocation?
Well, I, I, there's, there's authority for cities to be able to do that if, if the cities want to. And, and so as, as Des Moines, if we wanted to proceed, and I, I believe Ken has...
Anthony, let me, yeah, just add to that. Yeah, we're actively in the process right now of locating both locations and vendors who could fulfill that.
So there's nothing more for, you know, your work is done here?
Right, right. There wasn't the authority to before. Now there's the authority so, so that, that the city actually can do this.
Great. Okay. So what do you see as your, you, you've mentioned the CAC and, I, I mean, what is the value in your lobbying for, for this? I mean, yeah, can you, and, and can you sort of quantify how much of your time is going to be spent on that or is that just?
Well, I, it, this is symbolic, showing our, our delegation that, that this is still a priority for the City of Des Moines. It is something that, that we want to make sure continues being pushed forward. I, I think discussions with our delegation on best ways to proceed, because frankly, I'm not positive what the best way to proceed is with, with what is coming out of the CAC right now. But... But kind of crafting with them what should be going into legislation so that this the momentum momentum doesn't just stop, I come the end of June.
I guess what I mean is, well, like, how would it, if they cite an airport in Thurston or wherever, how does that benefit? What's the value for Des Moines?
So let me, I'm going to interrupt here.
Please.
Okay, so first of all, the value of participating in this is that both Senator Kaiser and Representative Orwell tend to attend the meetings and relate to us things they've heard and ask questions. The fact they're associated with PSRC, we've had a number of discussions, not public, about this process, because ultimately, the goal is to make sure that any sighting of a second airport provides relief to Des Moines. That's the agenda item. That's not Anthony's purview. That's the purview of of the kind of, what do I call it, enfranchising the value of this locally to our legislators.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll just take 20 seconds and say that it would be my preference that you spend exactly zero time working on the CAC, because funny thing, we had a mayor in 1980, Lorraine Hine. We've had mayors every 10 years or so. We've had second airports citing commissions with remarkable frequency. And whether or not they cite a second airport that does GA or taxis or hydrogen-powered blimps, it will not reduce the number of operations at Sea-Tac Airport by even one. Thank you.
I just want to remind council that if we vote on this as a body a whole, he will support all these entities with with equal effort, or what's prioritized, or so forth. And I disagree. I think a second airport does bring relief. It might not bring it today or tomorrow, but in the future, yes. This is something we're trying to do for our fellow citizens. The fact is, is there's only one place right now, and everybody's trying to pour two ga- five-gallon buckets in one gallon and expecting it to fit. The truth is, is we need relief, and we need it somewhere else. We've got our legislators supporting it, and we need to support them to make sure they follow through with it.
Love them all and all well.
Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of things to bring to the table here. The first is the recommendation to turn the catalytic converter theft into an ask. It says new legislation will be proposed, and we're going to work on it. So I would I would recommend that we say, we are asking the legislature in 2023. That's a, and then in regard to Blake, I would like to ask that we just add both the Blake ruling and pursuit legislation to the to the asks. So those are, the pursuit legislation is oft being coupled with the with the Blake decision in all the safety.
So could could you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Repeat the the.
Catalytic converter theft. Des Moines has helped, Des Moines has helped craft recommendations from the state task force for the study and reduction of catalytic converter theft. We are asking the legislature in 2023 to pass new proposed legislation that will combat this problem. It says in the, it just says here that new legislation will be, all the rest of these are asks.
That's.
And that's the only one that's a statement, so.
So a little bit about that, and Anthony, I'll I'll yield the floor to you in a second, is, so we've been in a workshop, a work group.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, we were asked to make recommendations that they could craft the So the way it's worded actually is okay with me, and then I'm going to yield the floor to you.
Yes, I in in consulting with Ken, I, no, he, I, I, he did observe that that Blake and Pursuit are two top priorities for for WASPIC. And we will be working closely with with WASPIC on on those issues. And and as as we do do support WASPIC on on many things, I will almost certainly be working working on that pursuit issue in any case. So it's council discretion if if you would like to add that specifically or or not.
So, yeah, so, okay, for the combating catalytic converter, I, I, your recommendation's valid. I just think what we're trying to do at this time and place, because I happen to have additional knowledge, I think we're okay. With the Blake one, adding the pursuit, I have no issue with that myself. How does other council members feel?
I have no issue with it.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
I just keep coming back to this idea of aspirational. I would love for you to pursue a cure for cancer in all its multivariate forms and expressions. But you presented a slate based on your workload and so forth and so on, and and I'm I'm not trying to, I I I was being serious. I I you should, don't spend any time on the CAC and and, you know, throw in a few hours on pursuit, and I really think that would be more practical. But you put up a slate, and the recommendation is to vote a slate, and so that's why I'm just sitting here going, yeah, okay, you know. So, you know, yeah, that's all I'm saying, is I just don't, you know, I don't want to get to nine, 10, 11 things. I wasn't even thrilled with the muffler deal. If you presented a slate, that's your professional recommendation, we should have voted on that, but, you know, and now I feel bad for not supporting, you know, Deputy Mayor Buxton's thing, but, you know, you got to stop someplace.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember Pennington.
So, Anthony, as the expert, the verbiage that we put forward, knowing that these are all asks, or these are all, these are all our our priorities, are we just, is it just kind of semantics in terms of what your terminology is? Or, I mean, you're you're going to go forward, and you're going to ask for all of these things, correct? Or you're going to support in the form of an ask for all of these things?
Correct.
So I I think we're taking more time than it needs on on verbiage, unless it's really critical. I would say, keep it the same unless unless you tell us it's really critical to to change that verbiage. Thank you.
And certainly, very happy to change verbiage. Yeah, I I pounded this stuff out, and and it can always be improved. So, and and certainly, I I will have nicer presentation materials that we give to legislators, and happy to work with counselors if if they would like to to ping this back and forth to perfect it as well.
City Mayor. Just gonna, thank you, sorry. I'm just gonna, actually, if you all ping it to me, I would appreciate that. And then I'll work with Anthony. Thank you. And the other thing is, you know, so this was a joint process that staff engaged with Anthony, based on our knowledge of of kinds of issues that council's concerned about and opportunities. And so this is a, this is a live document. This is not a stagnant, put-on-the-shelf document. This could be changed. I think one of the things, as session starts, I know the early conversations in January with Anthony are always, what does it look like is possible? And then let's go with the path of least resistance to try and get what we can, and what's the most valuable we can get compared to other things. We're not probably going to get everything. So just to keep that in mind, we will be reporting back to council as legislative session starts, as to where we are with all these different types of approaches, and where there's opportunity to create change and where there isn't. So just, I just want you all to know that this is a living document, and we look forward to your input. That's the whole point of this exercise right now.
Councilmember Steinmetz, and then Deputy Mayor Buxton, I'll go to you in in a second.
Okay, Anthony, as I understand it, there are there are work groups that are working on both the Blake issue and the pursuit issue, correct?
Yes.
And and ultimately, you would expect whatever action the legislature takes to be a product of those work groups as much as any individual city or municipality? Is that correct?
Yes, I, no, definitely, on those issues, we we will be support rather than leading, definitely.
Do you feel that there's anything in what what is proposed here tonight that prevents you from working on those?
No.
And supporting them?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, do you want to make a motion on the language?
Of the Blake.
Of the Blake and the pursuit? Sure.
Go ahead and make that motion.
Okay.
As you want it to be.
It already begins with, "Des Moines is working in partnership with WASPIC, AWC, and other groups toward better public safety, and I recommend for 2023, we are asking the legislature to clarify and further mitigate the impacts of both the Blake ruling and pursuit legislation." Now, I have an alternate reading if you want to add the sentence, which will help to rein in on.
You're removing the rein in ongoing problems of illicit drugs in our community?
Well, and that's, or you can put that sentence in there as well.
I would, I would.
Put that in there.
Recommend in your motion, you just add the word pursuit, and we include the other verbiage.
Okay, and I I.
Okay.
As long, yeah, it would be nice to put a comment there so that you know, yeah, never mind, that's fine.
In in theory, we'll let staff.
Okay, so I'll I'll read it that way. "We're asking the legislature to clarify and further mitigate the impacts of pursuit legislation and also the Blake ruling, which will help to rein in the ongoing problems of illicit drugs in our community."
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Harris, are you seconding?
No, I have a comment.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we got the motion on the table. Councilmember Steinmetz.
I'll second it.
Okay? All right, now discussion. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would favor, I would strongly support Deputy Mayor Buxton's amendment, but in substitution for the Blake language. In other words, I think the focus of the police should be on pursuit and not on Blake.
All right, is there any other, is there any other discussion before we vote on this 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 motion?
So I, yeah, I guess I have a question, and maybe it has to be with the chief, being his association with WASPIC. Is this exercise going to be in concert with WASPIC's position? Is it going to be contrary, or is it going to be confusing?
That's a great question. I just spent the last three days at the WASPIC conference and sat through legislative briefings for hours. The number one top priority for WASPIC this year is to fix the Blake decision. That has a huge impact on our communities with property crime, homelessness, and all kinds of issues that we're trying to work on along Pacific Highway South. To not think that Blake is a priority, that is the top number one public safety priority. We talked about pursuits. Pursuits are important, but I'll tell you, pursuits as they're being proposed is about exactly what our old pursuit policy was. You still can't chase a car for a headlight out or a taillight out. It's only for serious violent crimes. So there's not a huge difference there. Honestly, pursuits, the fix to the pursuits is part of the WASPIC priorities, but it's not at the top. Blake is at the top, and I'll I'll tell you, a bigger part of the the WASPIC priority, if I can.
Yep.
And I I mentioned this in an in an email earlier today to Anthony. I think the biggest, for the city of Des Moines, the biggest issue for public safety policy is the proposal that's out there for the cities, the city of Des Moines, to keep 1/10 of 1% of the sales tax that already goes to the state. As long as the cities guarantee that it goes to retention and hiring of police officers, the city can keep that 1/10 of 1%. That is on the table. I've I am told it's a tough lift. I would, if it was up to me, I'd ask Anthony to work 100% of his time on that one, because that'll get us some additional staffing. I think that is a priority. I think the Blake decision is the top priority. My understanding, in all fairness to Anthony, when if it doesn't work, I'm told it's a huge uphill battle because of the financial issues with the budget. It's going to be tough for the state to say, it's okay, cities, keep some of our money. However, I still think we should try and fight, but not 100% of your time. But that's the one I'm going to be talking to our legislators about.
If I may, Chief, so, but, I mean, I, I, I think that's a wonderful idea. Why why isn't that, why wasn't that your number one ask? Why why did Blake, you know, make it to the language and not that that?
Well, because as I listen to people, they tell me, as much as I have a desire and drive and want, my odds are pretty slim to get the passage of the sales tax part. The people that I listen to, that talk to legislators throughout the state through the WASPIC part, they're, they have been talking and meeting with legislators throughout the state for the past year. There is a path forward for that legislation, and they think that they can make a difference and and be successful. As Anthony was saying earlier, you kind of hit on those things that you think you can be successful on and spend most of your time there. But I I will tell you, just about every police chief in the state of Washington will tell you, if you want to make a positive impact on the quality of life for your community, the Blake decision will be the best way to do that. And I see, I think our judge, at least our judge was here a little earlier, but just in a in a nutshell, it's not to make it a felony. The Blake fix is to make it a gross misdemeanor and force people to get into treatment. So it's not a really punitive thing, but it puts that hammer over it. That's all. I I know we're getting off base, I'm sorry, but that's just.
For my money, this is wonderful. This is the best part of the night. Thank you, Chief.
So anyway, the the fact is, is that there's there's been a motion, the word pursuit, it doesn't sound like it might hurt. And let's go ahead and take a vote to see if we add that language to the agenda. So with that, all those in favor of adding that language as in the motion to the agenda, please raise your right hand. It passes 6-0. All right, is there anything we need to discuss about the agenda before we take our legislative agenda before we take a vote for the overall document or take a motion and an agenda? Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I had talked about this earlier. This would be more like a me-too. Actually, it would even be less than that. It would be a, an item to put in Tina Orwell's pocket. And so really, would just be stating, we support her in something she's working for. This would be under economic recovery, and it would say, "In tandem with the economic priorities of many our neighboring cities, Des Moines is asking the legislature to support the sustainability of the workforce pipeline, particularly through programs such as Running Start and the Trades." This was a specific ask from our representative, and I said I would bring it to the table. And she's not really asking for any help, she's going to work it. It's just nice for her to be able to say, these cities, this part, this partnership of cities, several cities in my district want this. And so she, and it's already passed, she's just going to be asking for money. So, but we can leave that.
Kind of in in the spirit of doing this and trying to keep it succinct.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, and since it's Representative Orwell, and I think we all agree, that would be a wonderful thing to work on, but I'm just wondering if maybe we couldn't fulfill the purpose by having council authorize the mayor to send a letter to Representative Orwell in the effect of supporting this and not put it on our legislative agenda, because the our legislative agenda is important. It's not Tina's agenda, but we want to support Tina. Does that make sense?
Sure, yeah, no, that's good. And and definitely, if if Tina wants wants us to do something, we, generally, we should do it.
But I don't know that that's put it on our legislative agenda as opposed to indicating support.
And a wonderful partner.
That's all. So do we have a motion for the council to approve a letter to be signed by the mayor?
I move for that.
Okay, so you want to make the motion?
I move that we send a letter to Tina Orwell. Representative Orwell in support of the sustainability of workforce pipeline, supporting it particularly through programs such as Running Start and the Trades.
And to be signed by the mayor.
And to be signed by the mayor.
Second.
And we have a second for Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. All right, moving on back to the legislative agenda. Do we have any more discussion before I hear a motion for the amended agenda? Seeing none, Councilmember Nutting, would you like to make, just as presented, changes to amended?
Yes, yes, I move to approve the 2023 City Council Legislative Priorities as amended.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. I think we've discussed the living whatever out of this, so I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. All right.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you very much. Now comes the introduction of items for future consideration. This is the time for sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not been previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, the manager of Water District 54 was viciously attacked a short while ago, and I was hoping that we could allocate some money and send him some flowers.
Are you making a suggestion for the Hearts and Minds Fund?
Indeed.
Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
I don't have any problem with that, I, I would wholeheartedly agree. So I second that motion, and I don't think we have to put a monetary value on it, do we? We just, you take care of that, is that the way it works? Okay, so all those in favor of, of sending flowers to our District 54 individual, I'm sorry, I don't know his name.
Eric Clark.
Eric what?
Clark.
Eric Clark, thank you very much. Raise your right hand, and the motion passes six zero. All right. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, we're going to move to board and committee reports. Council, we have an executive session in addition that may take some time, so I would ask, as I go through the board and committee reports, we make them with the best brevity we possibly can. With that, I'll open the floor to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief. chaired the environmental, environment committee meeting today, and the only item of business other than approval minutes was the SMAMP, the Surface Water Management Action Plan. Basin planning, this was our second bite at it, the next steps are, it'll come to council in mid-December, hopefully, open public comment and open house in January and early February of 2023. Final report to council in March and approval, and the permit deadline is the 31st. And Prop 1 for Highland Schools passed with an overwhelming majority, and so the middle schools and everything that needs to be redone is going to be redone, and thank you to the voters for all that. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the, all of the people who showed up tonight, and to speak about the Marina, it's, we, we can do a much better job of informing the public, and bless you, that's the way to do it, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Councilmember Pennington.
Hey, we had the environmental committee tonight, I attended the Des Moines Marina Tenants Association meeting the other night, and once again, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up this evening, this is, you know, the, the face-to-face honest engagement, you get the truth the first time, and that's the way you need to do, and that's what hap- needs to happen, to have good, if you want to have good influence in your local government and what goes on in your community, you know, this is the right forum to, to come to and the right forum to ask questions, and, and you'll get the straight answer. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess I just want to reiterate to Michael and the staff, a hearty thank you for all your work on this huge, this huge night of passing the budget. I know that personally, I advocated especially in regard to public safety issues through several discussions in the last few weeks, and I feel like especially those priorities ended up being reflected well in our decisions tonight on a couple of fronts, so, thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
I just want to thank the city, particularly Ashley Young and Michael, for your, your support on that as well. We had a wonderful Veterans Day event, I think we had 60, 70 people there, and it was, as a veteran myself, I really appreciate the fact that our staff, our police force, the fire department, and everybody takes their service seriously and is very thankful for it. And the other thing is, is I just want to wish everybody, because we won't be meeting next week, Happy Thanksgiving, be with your families, stay safe, stay healthy, and wish you the best, and I'm thankful for everyone who is a resident in the city. With, with that, we will be, the next meeting's going to be December 1st, for a regular city council meeting, and at this time, the council will go into an executive session to discuss labor negotiations under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 140, paragraph, or subset four, subset A. The executive session is expected to last 20 minutes, you are more than welcome to stay, however, council will be adjourning to the meeting immediately at the conclusion of the executive session and to formally take action. And do we need to do any kind of extension? Okay, we lost our clock.
It's 30, yes, 8:50.
8:50, and so we want to make an extension for 30 minutes?
Well, the executive session is.
Oh, it's estimate, oh, I had 20 for some reason, okay, 30, so.
I move to push the executive session to 9:30.
So, so we move, the length of the meeting goes to 9:30. Do I have a second? Seeing that, okay, all those in favor? Passes six zero. All right, with that, we will go to executive session, everybody have a good evening.